I guess I'm so used to doing it. Your business look ready?
I don't think I can. I don't have it by memory.
Okay, you ready?
I am ready.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your abilities, discharge the duties of the Office of Board President for Algonah Community School District in Cassuth County as now and hereafter required by law?
I do. Or I will. All right, thank you, everyone. We're gonna move forward then with the election of the Vice President for the 2020, or 2223's year. We need a nomination for Vice President.
Nominate Jay Limbaugh.
Thank you. We have a nomination for Jay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Gloria. We have a nomination and a second. Any others? Okay, well, nominations then, we'll have nominations cease. And then we'll just do another roll call like we did, all in favor.
Did we, um, say we want to cease?
Cease. Somebody?
Jay, you agree with that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Somebody wanna make a motion to cease the nominations?
Motion to cease nominations?
Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for nominations to cease. We'll do a roll call vote. And then I might need your phone again.
Yes, yeah. I'll go the same way again. So, those in favor of Limbaugh as Vice President, say aye. Enzi?
Aye.
Loachy?
Aye.
Nujia?
Aye.
Ortel?
Aye.
Limbaugh?
Sure.
Aye.
And Owen is asked.
All right, let's get it down to where it comes to. All right. All right, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your abilities, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Algonah Community School Board, of the Algonah Community School District as now and here and after required by law.
I will.
Thank you, Jay. Pass that back around. All right, now that we got some formalities over, we'll go move into something that's a little more natural for us, I think. So, as we get into this, please remember our mission and vision as we start to get into all of our decision-making tonight. So, all right. We would then need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Thank you. We have a second, Gloria. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, no hearing of delegations. We'll move on to consent items that you received in your packet. I believe there's been a handout also, a few extra updates on the bills, or the invoices that will be paid this month. And was there any questions for anyone on consent items?
Our monthly balances are strong. They're aligned to where we've been in previous years. Our general fund balance, our activity fund balance, our insurance fund are all higher than where they were last year. Our revenues continue to run higher than expenditures, although they're very, they're very close, they're balanced, which is where we want them to be. So, things continue to look good financially.
Good. Hearing none, we need a motion then to approve consent items.
So moved.
Thanks, Todd. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Andrea, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't, we don't have any communications to the board at this point, so we'll move into Joe and your superintendent report.
Um, Iowa school performance profile, which, a little bit about that, and what that is, is our accountability system that was created and developed with the Federal Education Plan, which is the Every Student Succeed Act, the ESA Plan, which replaced No Child Left Behind, which is a common phrase that people are used to hearing. It's different. You know, in No Child Left Behind, there was a snapshot assessment, and that, that created the value for your school. You know, that one, one-time assessment created the value of the school. The Every Student Succeeds Act is different. There's, there's a lot more pieces to that, which include, you know, your participation in assessments, your proficiency, although that's only about 10 percent, that's a pretty low part of it, your growth, your graduation rate, your post-secondary readiness, which is measured in kids taking the ACT, how well they're doing on the ACT, kids taking college-level courses, your, your progress in achieving English language proficiency, your, your environment, which is measured through a survey that the students actually develop. So, there's a lot more to the ESA Plan, the federal ESA Plan than there was No Child Left Behind previously, and I think creates a better profile, creates a better measurement for, for what schools are doing. ESA does focus on school accountability for equity, you know, that, that all children are being successful, measures that in a number of different ways. It accounts, it's focused on, you know, overall scores, and with those scores, what we will do to support schools who don't do well. So, a school is identified for comprehensive support if they fall within the lowest 5% of the state, or your graduation range falls below 67%. So, those are the, the two ways you can become comprehensive, which receives the most support from the State of Iowa. The ESA requires that all states republish, or publish their report cards. That's what creates the Iowa Performance Profile. You know, so you could go in another state and there's not necessarily a Minnesota school performance profile. They have a different method to report theirs out, but the requirement is that everyone does have to report out, all public schools have to report out. So, the Iowa, they, they release those. In our 2022 profile, which is based on last year's data, our high school has an acceptable rating, which is the same in that it's had the three previous years. Our middle school is a commendable, which is up from acceptable in 2021. Our elementaries all always have the same rating because only third and, only third and fourth grade actually take the ISAS, which is the assessment that's measured. So, whatever really Lucia Wallace's rating is, is what all three elementaries and Laverne's elementary actually is. Our elementaries are commendable. They were high-performing in 2021. That is a rating we'll, we'll see fluctuation in, and the reason is, there's only one year you can measure growth in how our elementaries are established. Because they only give it in grades three and four, the only year we can measure growth is what third to fourth does, where if you are a K6, you can measure three to four, four to five, five to six, and so on. So, we have less opportunity for what is the heaviest-weighted category for all elementaries. Some other highlights from this year's profiles are, you know, our four- and five-year graduation rates are above state averages. We certainly would expect those to be. Our percent of students proficient in ELA is over five points above the state average. Our percent of students proficient math is almost four points above the state average. Our post-secondary readiness index, college level, for post-secondary or advanced coursework is also above the state average. You know, most kids in Algonah High School, they're, they're taking college-level work or AP-level work, no matter what they're, they're tracking, where they're headed after Algonah High School. And that's because of the great offerings that we have for kids in Algonah. So, there, there's also areas we need to improve. We have a targeted status for one of our subgroups. So, all of our, you know, our, our schools, our district and our schools are measured in all of these things I had here, student participation, academic achievement, student growth, all of those. So are your subgroups, which means, you know, maybe minority population, or special education students, or freed and reduced. Those subgroups are also measured on the same. And we have a targeted subgroup at the high school, and it's our special education students, our students with IEPs, and that it's in the area of growth. You know, so that's, that's an area for us to improve in. We've already started to put together some action plans and are working in those areas. We also, we see a dip in scores from fourth to fifth grade, something the middle school has, has looked at a lot. You know, we've, we've started to talk about, a fourth-grade student would have about 120 minutes, a, a day of reading instruction, a fifth grader wouldn't. And, you know, those are things that Mr. Weeks and Mr. Roderick are starting to look at in their scheduling. You know, how can we change that? You know, so we don't see that dip that doesn't come from anyone doing anything wrong, it's just not having a schedule that would support, support the growth. So, those are a few things from the Iowa School Performance Profile. You hear a lot about it. You know, what does it actually mean? You know, we've, we've tried to talk with our staff and professional development about what it does mean and what these numbers, where they come from, and how they end up in a total ranking, and I think it's been a really good discussion. Overall, we've got a lot of great things. Our, our kids are doing, doing an awesome job. Our staff is working hard with our kids, and there's things we gotta get better at as well. Any questions on the?
Joe, can you run through the rankings real quick again? Is there, is it high-performing, commendable, acceptable? What's on there at four?
Uh, high-performing, commendable, acceptable, and then there's comprehensive. There's one, there's another one. There's, there's two low ones below that.
Below the acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And you would receive different levels of support based on those, if you were one of those two levels. If you're acceptable or higher, you don't, there's no support that's provided.
Any other questions? Thank you again for the updated report on those. So, at this point then, we'll move on to administrative report. We have the middle school. Mr. Roderick and Mr. Weeks are with us tonight to, looks like, talk about three areas. Any others?
Yeah. Thanks for having us tonight. Mr. Week is here. We're gonna talk about a few of the things we're working on in the middle school. One area we identified last year, I think this summer we looked at chronic absenteeism, and we wanted to, Mr. Week joining the middle school staff, really tried to target that. So, this year, we've implemented a situation where we are focused on, we, we run a report weekly. We've, initially, we identified 18 students that were either, for different reasons, either chronically absent or approaching that level. Maybe they had not missed the 10 days as of that point, but they were trending very quickly to hit that threshold. We took nine of the students, and we complete weekly check-ins with them on attendance and the absences. That's excused or unexcused. Some of the kids we're dealing with, for example, I have one on my list, the family chose to take a very important family vacation. So, she got flagged on my report. I met with them, we talked about it. So, she's not what I'm following up with, but I wanted to know more on what was going on, and just convey the importance of being in school, even though I knew it was a family vacation. We support that, very much so. So, these check-ins, we do them every week. The kids that do go on to that next level where it's not a family vacation, it's not a medical situation per se, we're meeting with parents, we're bringing parents in, we're creating a plan for the student to get to school, sometimes just supporting the parent. The parent needs that support at home to get the kid to school. It involves a few pickups even, where we went out and picked up the students and brought them to school. Again, supporting that parent. The key is, we're working to create a consistent approach. Last year, one of the things I felt like the downfall was, I would focus on students, and then I would move on. I would go to the next group and target them, and the ones I were working with, or was working with, they kind of followed my radar until they came back on, when they got back on that level, and we're trying to be more consistent with that. It's also helping you address what's causing the absence. You know, a lot of times it was, you're just not here at school, we gotta get you to school. I feel like we're spending a lot more time this year addressing why they're not in school, whether it's academic concerns, whether it's a family situation, or, and one of the examples I'll talk about later, there was a medical situation going on, and the dad needed some support. So, working on that, have these meetings implemented. The meetings sometimes do involve going into the home, and what I call home support, whether it's getting the kid to school, being with the parent at home. But what we've seen initially is, we're trending right now at 95.13 percent, not counting today. We had a lot of illnesses today, but as of last Friday, it was 95.13 percent, which is above last year's average slightly. But some of the success stories is, I have three different unique situations. We had a, a student that has historically, and I mean historically, all the way into the elementary, struggled with chronic absenteeism. This year, the student had missed a lot of days, okay, already. We're working with the family, but when, and so I was getting kind of frustrated, but when I actually looked at the data, the student has missed 10 less days at this point in school year than they had previously last year. It's almost double that when I go back to their fifth grade year. So, I think we're trending in the right direction, but a part of that is getting involved with the family right away, getting a plan, and then consistently implementing it. Student number two was ironically one that had really good attendance last year, and all of a sudden popped up, again, hit the 10 days. Actually flew right past the 10 days as we were meeting with parents. They had 17 total days for the entire school year. This year, in the first quarter, before the first quarter was even over, they had missed 19 days. Brought the parents in, worked on what was going on, what was the student doing when they weren't in school. Also, working with the parents to get a plan where the, the parent felt like the student was kind of buffaloing them a little bit, like saying they were sick. So, got the school nurses on board, where we were checking the kid out. In essence, we were gonna make sure the kid was ill before they went home. And what that has created is, the, the student isn't giving the parent the, the hard time anymore. And so, the student has only missed a total of two days since that absence, or that meeting. The parent hasn't even come in and got the student, but they come in and check with me first before, you know, hey, is this, has the nurse seen the student? They just don't believe the student immediately. They know the student has kind of worked to get out of school, so they're supporting us. And getting that parent buy-in is so important. You guys know that. So, there's a success. Again, two days in almost an entire quarter, where they had missed 19 in the first. The third student was a really good student last year as well, got in our, on our radar, we flagged. All these absences, they were getting communication just ill. But what's going on, you know, that's a lot of illness in, in a quarter. So, we met with the dad, situation where there's a lot of unknown medical things going on with the student. So, working with the dad, we changed how the student took their medication, when they took their medication. We also had some snacks provided to help, because there was some like stomach issues as well. So, found a way to support the kid. And while he hasn't, the young individual hasn't been perfect, missed 16 days, he's only missed four since our meeting. And so, again, we found a way to intervene and support the student. Now, we have Mr. Week come up. There's the other side of that, which is our restorative practices and how we support our attendance goals by talking with the student. So, I'm gonna have Mr. Week talk about those briefly.
Yeah, so, part of, part of coming to school is having a positive connection with the people that are here. And, and the research would bear that out, that when students feel a connection to the people within the school system, they're much more likely to come to school every day. So, restorative practices are how we're really focusing on making this a positive place for students to be. Restorative practices are about getting away from the zero-tolerance punishment style of, of school that we, we all grew up in, where if you do this wrong, this is your punishment, and that's final. It's the punishment, because it's what I'm telling you is the punishment. And instead, moving to a system where we identify who was harmed by the behavior, we identify how they were harmed, and then we work with the student on how they can repair that harm. Usually, that involves getting the, the two parties together and talking through things, which, it holds, gets more accountable, because they don't wanna have to say sorry, they don't wanna have to look the person in the eyes and explain why they did what they did. And it's, it's hard for them, for sure. But it also creates this positive culture where these issues are dealt with and they're fixed, and, and it seems to help a lot. We, when any student is sent to the office, that's to me or Mr. Roderick, they have an automatic meeting with the teacher that sent them after school that day, from 3:30 to 3:45. We don't typically take the whole time even, but it allows both parties facilitated by myself and Mr. Roderick to explain why they might have been frustrated, what issues they might have had with the behaviors that happened in class, and then come up with a plan together on how they can move forward in a more positive way, so that the next day can start fresh, and we can start on the same page once again. Those were started last year, and, and we've continued them this year to work with the whole school doing that. And the teachers are really liking the results and, and liking the, the impact that it's made on their classrooms. We've also implemented PGDs, Positive Greetings at the Door, so that every student walks into every class, and, and they're greeted with a nonverbal positive greeting, maybe a thumbs up or a high five, a smile, and, and their name is said. So, it's Chris, thanks for coming to class, can't wait for you to be here. And, and that's all that it really takes, is that the teachers stand at their doors and greet students. And there's actually a lot of research that, that it can have a huge impact for a small investment. It can increase student engagement by 20%, and it lowers student behaviors by 9%. So, we're excited about that culture that, that will help with that, that chronic absenteeism as well. And then we're also doing restorative circles. Twice we get an advisory, where we can talk about some of the really tough things that are facing our, our kids today. We also do whole-class circles when needed. So, if there's a class that's, that's really struggling to be in a positive learning environment, then we can come in and sit down and give everybody a chance to speak on, on why we're having the issues that we're having, and, and what we can do to, to have a better experience in, in the future. And, to my knowledge, those, those meetings that we have had, those circles that we've had as whole classes have made a significant impact on, on the classroom environment as well. So, those are some of the ways that we're using restorative practices to help with attendance. And we're just gonna keep ping-ponging back and forth of this.
I think the exciting part of all that is, we're bringing all stakeholders together, the students, the staff, ourselves as admin, but also the parents, to try to correct these, their problems, why the students aren't getting here. So, this is a good place for them to be, and they want to be here. It's not always easy, but it's work that's well worth it. The next side of things I wanna talk about was our, our rise intervention, student intervention time and support period that we've put into place this year for all students. Last year, we had this. If you remember, I think I, I believe I talked a little bit about last year. We had certain periods where we had it available last year, but it was not available to all students. It, it worked. The staff, we met last year, and we developed what we call our rise time this year, where it's available for every single student. The two areas we focus on are math and ELA. Some of the work we do in that time is math, automaticity, think of nine times nine. Y'all probably just thought of 81. Well, what we found in our data is, kids don't know that. They don't, they don't, they don't. And so, we're working on developing those skills. One that we all love is multiplying fractions. The kids struggle with that. We're, we're going back and redoing that. Long division. Supporting classroom instruction, and that really boils down to where we take the rise time to continue to work on the concepts being taught at that time in the classroom. So, it's not really going back and, and covering things that we've already done in the past, or we hope the kids had. We're, we're supporting the work that's happening in the class. Word Flights Intervention, which is a program that we started last year, kind of piloted it. We saw some very good growth data, initial data, but very good growth. So, we're using that during this time as well. Some, some things we do also to extend kids is a novel book study that some of our ELA students are doing. We also instruction on nonfiction standards and grammar, because right now, they're doing the fiction side of things. And when they flip to nonfiction next semester, that will flip to the fiction side. So, they're getting it all throughout the year, where in the curriculum, they're doing one or the other. So, we're trying to build a consistent base. We all know the idea, once it's out of sight, out of mind. Let's be honest, kids are like that, we're like that. So, we're trying to bring it back up to the kids, so they're, they're practicing and using that stuff. The grade-level teams plan the rise intervention, so obviously, the ELA teachers, the math teachers are the ones kind of championing the work that's being done, but then the teachers on that team are actually implementing. So, we have three ELA groups and three math groups in every grade. Still, area, you know, it's an area of growth yet. We, some of our intervention groups, they get kind of large. We have the staffing we have, and we're working on ways how to relieve that. One of the things we worked really hard to get rid of, though, is, well, I'm in, I'm in Mr. Weeks' group, so that's some kind of a punishment. Years ago, we had like some task groups, is what we called it back then, and students got to do different things. Well, they viewed some of, viewed some of it as a punishment more than what it was meant to be, which is help. And so, we, we've gotten rid of that. Knock out wood, so far this year, I have not had a single complaint about our rise time from parents. You know, why is my kid in this group and not that group? I have not had any phone calls, emails, anything. The kids are doing it, they're buying into it. Again, I do think we need to continue to grow and look at our numbers, how to pull down numbers, so that we can get more specific with the work we're doing. But I'm very excited for the work we did last year, the way it's growing. I, I do think there's a lot of opportunities with it. Different grade levels are a little bit farther ahead than other grade levels. Some really are buying into it, some are still a little more resistant to it, or trying to figure out how to implement it to the best for the students. But we're getting there, and I think it's, I think it's gonna make a difference for our kids. So, Mr. Week, it's the ping pong now.
Yeah.
So, finally, we are going to be piloting a new program for second semester that I think we're pretty excited about, called the E-Hall Pass. And it will basically take all of our, all the passes that, that students would have to leave the room, and it would put it onto this system that would run through their Chromebooks and through our teachers' laptops and even cell phones. We, our goal here is to, to limit the amount of kids we have in the hallway, which would then increase the amount of time that we're spending in the classrooms. E-Hall Pass is great because it, we, we have tons of data on how much time kids will be out of the classroom, and then we can develop interventions to help fix those things as, as they arise. If we have two kids that can't be in the hall together because maybe they don't get along, or maybe they're dating, or what have you, we can set that up so that they cannot be issued a pass at the same time. You know, there's only so many toilets in the bathroom. If, if there's enough kids in that bathroom at any one time, the next pass would not be issued, because if you're just gonna stand there and wait for a toilet, you can stay in the class until one's available for you. There, students would still be able to use the restrooms between class periods and go to their lockers and all of that, but we would be able to limit the amount of time outside of the room that, that they would be, you know, leaving their classes. And, and it allows us to just have a little bit more transparency with, with how much these kids are actually out of the class, and, and what we can do if, if something needs to be done, or, or maybe it's, you know, for some students, everything would be fine. But we're really going to encourage that kids are using the time that they have between class periods to, to take care of those things when possible, and, and trying to encourage that time to be used instead of their instructional time. So, that would be, we're, we're in the, the work part of this right now, where we're doing a lot, getting, getting kids into the program online and getting ourselves trained, so that we can help get teachers trained at the January 11th professional development, and hopefully implement it that, that next Monday. So, that's a system that we're excited to, to trial, but it is a trial, so we'll see how it works, and, you know, keep you posted.
Uh, finally, I was just gonna mention a little report on a new middle school sport we started this year, girls wrestling. Pretty excited to say we have 17 total girls out. That includes one manager, what I call two manager extraordinaires. They're practicing with us, they wrestle with us. They're just not comfortable competing yet. And then there's 14 girls that are actually competing in every meet we have. They're doing a great job. It's a unique experience. As I told you, I have the unique pleasure of being their coach. I'm learning a lot, because I've never, I've never coached a, a group of individuals that are completely new to a sport. But they are energetic, they're working hard. Jay, you were at the meet, and you know they're sitting there cheering for each other and supporting each other. And I think it's a great opportunity for our kids, and I just wanted to kind of give you the participation numbers and let you guys know that. Really appreciative of you guys supporting that new, new sport for our, our young ladies. There's a little excitement about it, and I like that. I know there's actually excitement at the high school as well with that team. So, thank you, guys. And then I guess, any questions or comments for us?
No, just thanks for all the work in the middle school. You're, even the, the testing numbers were great. I mean, just the connection you're starting to have with the kids is great. So, thank you.
Very good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you both.
On the E-Hall Pass, is that something that the high school's gonna be doing too?
Yeah.
I, also, we've, we've talked, I, I've worked with Mr. Morgan and kind of told him what we were implementing. They felt comfortable with what they were using right now. I think if it, you know, if it's something they really like, I think that they'd be, they'd be more open to it. But I think with us trialing it for a semester, I think it will kind of be a gateway this time around.
Doesn't require the teacher to stop teaching or anything like that? It's gonna be student-driven?
So, they would need to approve their passes. Similar to how in class now, sorry, yeah, here. Similar to how they would now, where if a student raised their hand and asked to use the restroom, they would stop to approve that verbally.
Okay.
They would need to... They would need to approve it on their computer. Just like in any classroom, our teachers would set up their expectations for what that looks like. There shouldn't be kids interrupting instruction to ask to use the restroom. If it's an emergency, just go, and if it's, if it's something that can wait, it should wait until a more productive time for you to leave. So teachers would need to approve those, yeah.
I think the great thing, when I hear Rudy James talk about this, is, you know, this program, it knows what's going on in whole school, right? It's not just that classroom, the program knows if there's 10 guys signed out to the bathroom. The program knows if, you know, these two kids who, you know, we don't want in the hallway at the same time, or signed out at the same time, and it won't let that stuff happen. So we put some control into areas that we want.
It provides some data for us as well, we can see how much time, you know, we talk all the time about kids are actively trying to avoid classes. You've all heard that. This gives us actual raw data of how much time they're missing, periods they're missing, what the, is it math, is it ELA? Or are they, or Mr. Week and myself always skipping out of math class to go meet someone? I mean, and we know it, sometimes the way we track it out can be very difficult. This gives it to us in a very simple, what appears to be a very simple format that we can collect that data from, and then do an intervention with it.
And just to be clear, no kid will ever be denied a trip to the bathroom. If they say they've gotta go, they will be allowed to go, but it does let us, you know, well, here, I'm looking at your pass that you're requesting, but you requested another pass 10 minutes ago in your last class. Do you need to go again, or are we trying to get out of this activity? You know, that conversation can happen, and it's, it's an important one, because I think every teacher and every school in America can tell you a student that uses the restroom to get out of their classroom. And so this can help us cut that time down.
So is that built through like the information, the school information system, or is it an app, or...
Yeah, so it'll be a separate program. It's called E-Hall Pass, and so it will pull our information from Infinite Campus. So when kids get implemented into Infinite Campus, as like new students show up, it should be on our E-Hall Pass system within two or three hours. So, that was a question was asked today. We did our training stuff like today, we're fresh into this. But yeah, it'll pull right from Infinite Campus, and then we are able to look at any student and look at the data behind that, and we could print off for conferences and let parents know. The school we got it from, actually, the guy said, so, you know, it was, it was not long into the school year, and he said that a girl had already been out of the classroom for 16 hours, which is two full school days of just time out of the classroom. And so that kind of stuff can be really powerful when you look at it, and say like, okay, so this kid doesn't have that attendance problem that we're trying to fix, but they're still not getting what they need from school, because they're, you know, circumventing the actual learning. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, we'll go into our new business, and we have the first reading of the board policies.
Yeah, first reading of the 600 series. No actions tonight. I did put a link in the general information as well, so you can, you got a chance to go and look at that, you know, it's all linked to our school website, and then we'll do the final reading next month. We have done a lot of work in the 600 series already. We've done curriculum development, instructional curriculum, instructional materials, so much of the 600 series has been reviewed, and we've made changes to it in the last year and a half with this group, so I'm not anticipating a lot of other changes to the 600 series.
Because I looked at that link, and usually you have it crossed out in green and red for changes, and it didn't have any, that's why...
Right, right, because we've done so many pieces already that I'm not anticipating. There's a couple parts that haven't been, you know, we need to get through all of our policies in a time span, you know, that's a state requirement, so we just continue in our series, where eventually, Lisa's gonna help me, we're gonna create a schedule, so that we're always have policies and schedules and meet review.
Great. All right, I think we can move on then to dropout prevention application.
Yeah, every, every year, we approve our dropout prevention money, this amount annually to fund our dropout prevention and at-risk programs. There's a number of different positions and staff members throughout the district that are funded through this. We have an at-risk program. At the high school, we have some at-risk teacher associates. Middle school, parts of our guidance counselors, parts of our administrators are all funded through dropout, dropout prevention. It's a per pupil amount of .046 times the district cost per pupil, times your certified enrollment, so it's kind of complex. It's a very valuable resource, revenue source for us, about $430,000 last year, that will allow us to fund programs, and that we just simply wouldn't be able to have without it. So I do recommend the SBRC Modified Supplemental Amount for Dropout Prevention, again, as we have in the past.
Yeah, the motion to approve that amount. Thank you, Jay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Tom, thank you. Any further discussion? This is something we've done yearly, so, for standard.
Standard procedure.
Standard procedure, pretty much. All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the Cassoot County Hancock County Conference Board member.
Every December, we appoint someone from our board to serve on the Cassoot County and Hancock County Conference Board member. I know a few of you...
I've done it the last two years.
Jay's done it the last couple years, Robby's done it before. It entails a meeting or two?
Usually, yeah, a meeting, and then they usually finalize it. Sometimes they'll just send you the stuff, and then you go to the meeting.
And what do the meetings entail?
Raises for the assessor.
Assessor records, all the ones in the county level, like assessors, recorders, maybe.
You would enjoy it.
Yeah. They just use the different...
That denomination.
They use the different areas, like school boards and others, to help make sure that it's all kind of coordinates everybody's area, within, you know, what we might be doing and what they're doing, and so, and...
Are you interested?
I'd be happy to do it.
All right, great. We need a motion then to approve, I'm not Andrea.
Oh, I will, motion to appoint Andrea to help with that.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and then, is that something that Lisa, or you would send to them, the nomination? Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries for Andrea, thank you very much for willing to do that. All right, open enrollment.
And we don't have any.
Say, do we have any? Go ahead and see any. All right, we'll move past that to resignations.
We have one resignation, Colericki from Teacher Associate at Lucia Wallace.
Do you have a motion to approve resignation?
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Todd, we have a motion and a second to approve the resignation for Teacher Associate Lucia Wallace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And we do have a few more in the new contracts.
Yeah, some new contracts, Rich Collison, custodial, that's just snow removal only. It's typical that we have someone come in to help with that, help with our crew in this morning, in the morning. Joe Taylor, Special Olympics, half of that contract, so in our master contracts, we have a Special Olympics contract that Joe and Natalie Knoplock are gonna share, so splitting that contract in two. Shannon Trunkhill for middle school softball, and Stephanie Kieker for our accounts payable administrative assistant position that we approved a couple months ago.
All right, need a motion then to approve our new contracts.
I'll make a motion to approve the five new contracts.
Then, you, Todd, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lori, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're at that point now, where we'll need a motion and a second then to go into closed session, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual appointed and hiring, performance or discharge is being considered. This is actually for our progress review for our superintendent, so...
I'll make that motion to go to closed session.
Thank you, Jay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea, and I believe we need a roll call, right, to go into closed session?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
For watching?
Yes.
You too?